Are they weighing me on me or you?
You may.
Well, you better to go and talk to them.
Thank you.
Close.
That's going to start.
Mr. Snow, would you take your seat, please? We have to start. Well, golly, you gotta come here earlier. They've been waiting here for two hours for you, Jerry.
Peter, you started.
Yep, I've started. Thank you. So, good evening and welcome. If you'd please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a breathing and a justice for all.
We'll do a roll call of council. Councilmember Flynn.
Here.
Fowler.
Here.
Burke.
Present.
Wilms.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Councilmember Wozniak is out.
Thank you. We'll move to citizen input. Please be advised that it is the policy of the municipality that there will be a three-minute time limit per person with the time extension per the chief presiding officer's discretion. First on the list is Donna Hutchinson.
Thank you for allowing me here. I'm here to try to convince you not to allow the rezoning of the Medfield area to build a Dollar General. I remember what it was like in that park before COVID hit, especially during the summer. All the parking places were filled. It was very busy with people, cars, and bikers. There were signs up all around that said you couldn't use the park unless you were a resident or a guest. Dollar General will not have those signs around them. It will lose its safe neighborhood atmosphere. Dollar Generals, any dollar store, has a high propensity to be robbed, especially Dollar General. I don't know if you looked into it, but they had the highest rate of robbery for four reasons. Number one, most of their transactions are cash. Number two, they told their employees, "Don't resist. Whatever they want, give it to them." Number three, the thieves know they run in and out. It's quick, it's over. Number four, they have longer store hours. So as the neighborhood calms down, the thieves know they can go in for a quick and easy theft. Parents used to send their teens and pre-teens to that park, especially for the bicycle ramps, and they felt they were safe there. But if you put a Dollar General, that whole atmosphere will change, and parents will not feel the safety. So I'm asking you to not, we're not against new business. We know that brings in revenue, but this is the wrong place, especially for that business. So please vote against the rezoning. Thank you.
Donna, you're aware that it's not on the agenda?
Yes, but I would like other people to know that it's coming and get the word out.
Fair enough.
We fought very hard not to let Walmart in, and I think we're going to have to fight very hard to keep Dollar General out.
Fair ball. Thank you. Next is Janet Hoffner.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi. I couldn't say it better than she just said it. I'm here for the same reason. I really am concerned about the safety issues. Like she said, there are so many young people who use that park over there and that bike ramp, which is one of our showcases, and I think you're going to lose a lot of safety and a lot of trust by the parents who, you know, you're just going to have a different kind of atmosphere. I also don't like to see all those woods cut down. I think that property is owned by Cooper Communities, and I believe that there are many other places that are already zoned for businesses that Cooper owns and could put that store, you know, could work with Dollar General to come in. Again, like she said, I'm not against Dollar General, but it's not the place for it. I am aware of the planning working, Planning Commission working session this week. I'm also aware that we are supposed to put our comments in writing according to your website. And so for anybody listening or who is not aware of that email address to the city planner, Mr. Lynn's address is Dlinnn@bellavistaar.gov. Please let them know how you feel. I think that's about all I can say.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's the end of the citizen input. We move now to council reply. Anyone?
I guess we have not seen that request before the council, so we'll take those comments under consideration when it arrives, I guess.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, ladies, for speaking up. Asking for your approval for the February 28 minutes. It was a regular meeting. Are there any errors or omissions?
Move to be approved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Snow and seconded by Mr. Fowler.
Okay. Roll call vote. Flynn?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Carrie, five zero.
Thank you. Our finance director has released the year-end financial report for the year 2021. It is unaudited, as it normally is first. The auditors will be coming in within the next two months. We continue to be in exceptionally good shape. Our quick asset ratio, which measures the ability of a company to use its near cash or quick assets to extinguish or retire its current liabilities, it always should be at least one to one. We are 3.7 to one, which is actually lower than it was. The 2.95 million that we received for our first tranche of the ARPA money is in accounts payable because it's considered a liability until you obligate and then spend, and hopefully it moves onto the balance sheet. So we are in excellent shape. Our fund balance, what we used to call the reserves, is sitting just a little over 11 million, and by ordinance, we should be sitting at 5 million. If I move over to revenues, again, we were 1.6 million over on the sales tax, and total operating revenues were 2.6 million. Mercy Bridge is still sitting there, and you can see it under state aid, so it sits as an underrun because the money has yet to be spent. And for those of you at home or here that wish to attend the long-awaited breaking of ground, that's going to happen this Wednesday at 10 o'clock in the morning down at the bridge. Hooray, eight years, we're going to do it. Finance Director Hall has also given you the status of the impact fees as of the end of the year, which is 138,000. These are fees, ladies and gentlemen, that the council approved last year upon the advice of a consultant that we hired. So every new home or new business that is built, a certain amount goes to the police, a certain amount goes to fire, and a certain amount goes to the library. These funds cannot be spent to simply replace an existing asset. It can only be spent to buy something new. So as we move forward, that will certainly help because we're going to have to buy more equipment, et cetera. So we're looking forward to having a nice pot in there so that when the time comes, it'll be a little easier on our operating and our capital fund. If you have any questions, please direct them to Kim. I know that, John, you were looking for that same breakdown that Carrie used to give us, and we actually saw that today. She was using some of that software that we saw at the conference, and so I have dropped her a line, and I've asked her to have a look at Carrie's awesome. I'll sit down with her and show her so that she can actually trace it out for you.
I had a question, Peter.
Yes, sir.
Is that groundbreaking? Is that Wednesday at 10:00 or Thursday at 10:00?
It's 31st, whatever that is.
Oh, okay.
It's been a long weekend down in Little Rock with the municipal league.
I have a question.
Sir?
A question on the financial report. You said that the fund balance was about 11 million. Does that include, does that deduct commitments of funds for projects that we've approved or not?
Yes, that's total unassigned, but it does not include something for...
It doesn't deduct off the committed projects?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Anyone else? Alrighty, thank you. I entertain a motion to suspend the rules and read all proposed ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Snow, seconded by Mr. Flynn.
Wilms.
Excuse me, Mr. Wilms made the motion.
Right. All right, roll call vote. Councilmember Wilms?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Carrie, five zero.
Thank you. The next is an ordinance waiving the requirements of a formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Stronghold Data LLC in the amount of $52,148.03 plus applicable taxes for the purchase of IT storage and servers. For those of you that may be new to the rules and regulations of municipalities, if you're going to waive the requirements for a formal bid, it must be done through ordinance. It cannot be done through a resolution. Ordinance, if you like, is a law, and a resolution is statement of intent. Also, it has to come to council for approval because it is greater than $35,000, which is a new limit that was set by the legislature last year. Prior to that, it was 20,000. So just so you know why we're going through this exercise. This is IT storage and servers. We're always upgrading the network, always have to be aware of hackers, and you'll see something else coming up a little later. We have strengthened the network considerably over the last seven years. We have strong backup in three different locations. Critical are always backed up every hour, including outside the city, so that if, God forbid, we get hit with a tornado, we have another city that all our crucial data is actually sitting in. So this money, this money, councilors, is actually in the approved 2022 budget. It's under capital for 50,000, so it has exceeded that by 2,100. And John is going to cover it off with a line item in his operating budgets. If you remember, a department head inside his or her own budget can move money around and work with the finance director. What is not allowed and requires council approval is for one department to give money to another department. We're also asking that you agree to suspend the rules and move to third and final so that John can get underway and get this equipment purchased. Are there any questions at all?
I'm moved. Will you suspend the rules, move to third and final?
Second.
Suspended by Mr. Fowler and seconded by Mr. Wilms.
All right. On the motion to suspend, Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Carrie, five zero.
Thank you. Third and final reading, waiving the requirements of a formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Stronghold Data LLC in the amount of $52,148.03 plus applicable taxes for the purchase of IT storage and servers. As I say, this is the third and final. Is there any discussion?
Move to be approved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Snow and seconded by Mr. Fowler.
All right. Roll call vote again. Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Carrie, five zero.
Thank you. We may move into the world of resolutions. The first is approving the mayor's appointment of Ricky Head to position five on the Bella Vista Board of Construction Appeals. Mr. Head lives in Bella Vista. He lived in Richmond Hills, Texas prior to retiring here, where he served as a city council member, a chairman of a zoning board of adjustments, and vice chair of planning and zoning board. All very good attributes for this position. Are there any questions at all?
Move to be approved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Snow and seconded by Mr. Wilms.
All right. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Carrie, five zero.
Thank you. The next resolution is approving the mayor's appointment of John Nuttall to position three of the Bella Vista Board of Construction Appeals. This is a reappointment. Are there any questions at all? Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Flynn and seconded by Mr. Fowler.
All right. Roll call vote again. Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
And Wilms?
Yes.
Carrie, five zero.
Thank you. The next resolution is amending the 2022 city budget to recognize and appropriate 5.9 million in Federal American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 grant funding to apply to salary and payroll expenses, non-retirement, of the police and fire departments beginning in April the 1st, 2022. So let me explain what's going on. You've probably heard of the American Rescue Act. Every city and county and state has been given a certain allocation based on population, and we have been allocated 5.9 million over two years. We received the first tranche last year. At the advice of the municipal league, we did not spend any of it, in fact, most cities did not, because we did not get the federal treasury rules, the final rules, until the end of last year. The rules changed somewhat, so it's a good thing that we waited. They changed it so that if your allocation was less than $10 million, then basically you could spend it any way you wished, provided it was on government services or government activities. The reporting of what you spend it on can be quite intense based on what we went through with the CARES Act, and that would happen for approximately 11, maybe 12 identified possible projects that we might want to do as a city based on input from the citizens. There is also a timing issue. The final rule said that you must obligate the money to a project by 2024, and you must spend it by the end of 2026. There may be a project that will take quite some time, and we would not be able to meet those deadlines. So in speaking with our attorney, in speaking with the municipal league, in speaking with our internal auditors, they have no objection when we say we will take the entire money in this year, and we will apply it to the non-retirement pay and benefits of fire and police. The money that we would have spent on fire and police will be 5.9 million, and it'll drop into our general fund and will be held there so that we can then take our time and do things right and make sure that we get all the right projects funded. We're not the only city doing this. A number of us have just finished a weekend conference down in Little Rock with the municipal league, and this is becoming quite frequent. So just wanted to make sure that everybody understood why we're doing this, okay? We've had a lot of discussion in two work sessions, but I'll ask for more if anybody wishes to add. John?
Well, I'd like to compliment our mayor and administration. At the Arkansas Municipal League this morning, they advised everybody to do this and told the mayors, "Hey, you ought to go back home and do this," and our mayor already had it in progress. So I admire our administration for being ahead of the curve, so to speak.
Thank you. Mr. Fowler?
No, so I'm just going to make a comment. So 5.9 million, just for what it's worth, our police and fire, I kind of recalculated that because we're going to have, we're going to be voting on resolution to put $435,000 toward basically base salaries for employees across, and I allocated what the police and fire would be. So police and fire salaries for the year would be about 7.9 million. So we're going to allocate 5.9 to that, so we should not have a difficult time spending that money this year. We'd have to spend 25% less than the 7.9 in order not to do that. Secondarily, so what did you, what is our reserve balance again?
11.6.
So theoretically, this 5.9 should kind of fall to that reserve, right?
Yes.
Because we're not spending it against the salaries.
It can't until you obligate it.
Right.
Hang on. This is very important. Legally, ARPA funds cannot be used to reimburse reserve funds, and that's not technically what's happening. So what you're doing is you're taking ARPA funds and you're appropriating it toward fire and police salaries for the current year, and then that in turn means certain general revenues that you were going to expect to collect for the remainder of the year have no such restriction and could go into reserve if you wanted them to. Sounds like I may be saying the exact same thing.
Yeah.
It is very important that we refer to that appropriately.
It could fall to that if we don't spend it, is what I'm saying, on other projects. And we're going to be spending like 2.2 million in the remainder of our...
We're going to spend all the ARPA funds on fire and police salaries?
I understand that.
Okay, right.
I think we're saying the same thing. I don't mean to say it's going straight to the reserve at all. I'm just saying we won't spend that money versus police, and if we didn't allocate it to something else, then it would eventually end up as a reserve. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Yes. Larry?
I'll try stating it, I'll try stating it another way. Stating it another way is that we've allocated in our budget a certain dollar amount for police and fire salaries and wages. That money, because it's being replaced with the appropriation of the ARPA funds for that purpose, means that our budget will have an unexpended amount of 5.9 million. That becomes then excess revenue for us that we can allocate for other purposes, of which we've discussed some of those, and I think they're on the agenda tonight for some of that, is it not, Mayor?
It is.
So we will spend some of that residual money that we will have accrued by the end of the year unspent that's been a part of our regular revenue, so. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Could you repeat that?
Probably not.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. That's approved by Mr. Fowler and seconded by Mr. Wilms.
All right. Roll call vote again. Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie, five zero.
The next is a resolution amending the 2022 city budget to appropriate $300,000 in otherwise unappropriated and unrestricted financial reserves to the city information technology budget for purposes of enhancing cybersecurity of city computing and digital systems. So our IT director is always staying on top of the aging of all of our equipment. So for example, we have a number of outdated copiers, and that may sound a little silly. What has that got to do with IT? It's because they're tied into the network, so that when you're sitting at your desk and you want to print, it's going over the network, sending the print command, so it'll come out. The problem is, over time, the copiers cannot be upgraded because they're too old, because you have to get into the hard drive with the software to upgrade, and it can't take it. So you have to keep replacing copiers. It's a similar situation that we have for our laptops. But we don't buy the laptops, we lease them. So at the end of five years, we go, "Here you go, Mr. Dell. This is your vote anchor, and it's not ours." This is different. We actually did a lease versus buy, and believe it or not, it was cheaper to purchase. So those are just some of the things that we're going to look at. We're looking at some consulting over the next 24 months to make sure that we're doing it the right way, especially with the hackers becoming more and more sophisticated. We do hire professional hackers, yes, they exist, every year, who, we never know when, try to break into the system, and they have not been able to do it. But your high five has to be very quick because they're already dreaming up ways to get in. So we watch it constantly. There's a bit of urgency here because of the Ukrainian crisis. We don't know what's going to happen, and I doubt very much if Mr. Putin even knows of Bella Vista, but you have to be on your guard. You can't let it slip. So that's what this is all about. Are there any questions at all? I entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Wilms?
Second.
Mr. Snow, second?
All right. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Carrie, five zero.
The next resolution is amending the 2022 city budget to appropriate $200,000 in otherwise unappropriated and unrestricted financial reserves to the city capital improvement budget for the fire training facility to fund project contingencies. So you may remember that we had a bond, and the citizens voted in favor of the bond and said, "Okay, you can spend it three ways. It can be on fire station number three, which we have completed. It can also be on a public safety building, which is in progress." I hope you're following the progress. It's rather exciting. And then you can also build a fire training facility. We had one location scoped out for the fire training facility. However, once the engineers got in there and spent money doing what engineers do, basically drainage, it was going to cost us $700,000 just to fix the drainage alone, and that was unacceptable. So we had to look for other land elsewhere. We have found a tract of land up towards the animal shelter, and Cooper owns it. We have come to an agreement on the price. Council approved it, I think it was last month, and we're now in the signature phase. Then we'll do some escrow for about $10,000. Then the engineers will go in, and they'll do it again and have a look and make sure that it perks, that the land is okay. Plus, we're going to have to build a road into this from Highway 71, and that's going to be part of this 200,000 expense. So A, it's to cover new expenses for this new location, and to B, it's covered, to cover some of the costs that were in the bond that were spent in the first location until we decided that it was not a good idea to build there, and we have to do these expenses, for lack of a better term, all over again in the new location. So I hope that makes sense. Anybody want to clarify it for me? Alrighty.
Move to approve.
Mr. Wilms? Second by Mr. Fowler.
Okay. Roll call vote again. Councilmember Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Carrie, five zero.
The next is another resolution amending the 2022 city budget to appropriate 1.3 million dollars in otherwise unappropriated and unrestricted financial reserves to the street department fund budget, excuse me, to fund additional street resurfacing and improvement. So last year, we spent 2.4 million on the resurfacing. So it's slurry and it's asphalt. And so this year, in the approved budget, we also put in 2.4 million so that we could carry on and be aggressive. Then we went out and got prices. Because of the rise in oil, there has been a rise in asphalt and slurry, which is all oil-based, of 34%. So this request covers the 34%, plus because we now have some of the ARPA funds that we have just moved to cover the police and the fire salaries, which will filter down in savings for us so that we can apply this to it. We are also going to be tackling some of what many of us know as the yellow brick roads. Those are the roads with the two yellow stripes, so that if you have friends visiting here and they're about to go off and explore, you tell them if they get lost, "Look for the yellow brick roads," and that will always take them out to a major highway so that they don't get lost. Some of them are showing their age. Some got beat up with the bypass, especially Highlands down near Glasgow. Also, the turn onto Rocky Del Hollow off Highlands to access the bypass is a very difficult turn, so we're going to widen that. There are parts of Hampstead and parts of Trafalgar that also need to be addressed. So this is the additional that we're going to do on top of what we were going to do anyway.
And we are going to get a couple of additional miles. Typically, we get 59, about 59, and originally, we were told it was going to be a net sum zero, but we are going to get...
Yes, we will.
A few extra miles.
Yes, we will get a few extra miles. It costs, by the way, around, it did cost, before the increase, about $70,000 a mile for asphalt, and now, of course, it's gone up even more. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Mr. Flynn. I think Mr. Wilms came in first, Mr. Fowler.
Okay. Okay, Flynn and Wilmz. Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wilmz?
Yes.
Carrie, five zero.
Okay, the next is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Superior Automotive Group of Asylum Springs pursuant to a state contract for the purchase of four 2022 Dodge Charger Police Cruisers in an amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty-eight thousand eighty-eight dollars for the police department. Mr. Kelly?
Chief may want to come up and kind of explain. I think there's a shortage of the 2022s, and so that creates a little bit of an issue, so. There's a shortage of 2022s, so right now... If you can use the microphone. Sure. There's a shortage of 2022 vehicles. Of course, everybody knows the problem with procuring vehicles. The ones we can procure right now are brand-new 2021s that have never been driven or sold. They're brand-new. So I would ask, because, and there may be a problem, but we have to take a look at the bid price, because there are still 2021 bid contracts. It's 2022 bid contracts. So I'd ask, now we just table the resolution, now look at going back and seeing how else we could procure these vehicles, whether it be just to go out to bid, or something like that.
So you want to table for a month, Chief?
We'll table for a month.
Okay. Any questions for Chief? Mr. Wilmz?
Will that compromise your ability to find vehicles for your needs by delaying it a month by us?
Well, it's not really being delayed by you, it's being delayed by me, because of the fact that I'm just realizing today, I was told these are 2021 vehicles, not 2022 vehicles. I do know that it could be a problem, that the person we use at Superior Automotive procured over a hundred vehicles, he thought, from Dodge last year, and then Dodge canceled those orders on him, and so he's been going around the country trying to find as many vehicles for all the police agencies that he can, and some are 2021s, which are basically the same thing.
They're brand-new, so...
They're brand-new, they haven't been driven, but there is a, you know, we have to go back and look at the procurement contract, because... The concern, I can answer this, and that is, to buy these without competitive bidding, we would, we could do that by purchasing vehicles at the state procurement price. So the state procurement price is for 2022 vehicles. So the one, first issue would be, are we paying 2022 prices for a 2021, even though it's still brand-new? Number two, if it's the 2021 price, is that still an active, valid state procurement bid agreement?
That would have been a cost from last year.
That would have been a year ago, and so I don't, I just, with those unknowns, at this point, I can't advise you, we're in the clear if we move ahead, so I'm gonna recommend you table it as well.
Vehicle prices have appreciated, so maybe the 2021 prices for last year are no good longer good for this year.
We just don't know, so, you know, that's the main issue.
Move to table?
Second.
Okay, we'll table it until the next?
Next meeting.
The next meeting?
Or until requested.
No, we'll just table it to the next meeting for now.
Do we need to...
Okay, it was moved by Mr. Wilmz, seconded by Mr. Flynn, okay?
Okay, we've got a motion to table by Wilmz and seconded by Flynn. Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wilmz?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie, five zero.
Thank you. The next resolution is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an extra work authorization to the contract for CEI engineering in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars to facilitate engineering work necessary for the proposed fire training site near US seventy-one and the Missouri State Line. So we just did the twenty, excuse me, the two hundred thousand, but because this extra work is estimated to be over the thirty thousand dollar limit, that thirty-five thousand dollar limit, excuse me, therefore we have to come to council and ask for their permission in order to spend that money. Chief Sims is sitting in the back. Welcome back from vacation, Chief. Does anybody have any questions for Chief? Mr. Snow?
Is this the, is this the final location? Are we, is this contingent on some potential issues with this location? Or is this the final?
Well, you've entered into a real estate contract that allows us to do certain inspections.
Right.
If for some reason there were to be some lacking nature to the area, that we couldn't use it, we wouldn't close, and you'd have to find another place. So I don't, I think he intends for, Chief, come on up here and speak, but I think he intends for this to be the place, but that's, the due diligence process could unexpectedly lead us in another direction. That's correct. So, I mean, you have to, you have to have a contract in place before you can do the testing we need to have done.
Right, right.
It's like we did on the Tudor site.
And...
And required testing that we found out that that was going to be the one usable site.
And we've appropriated two hundred thousand for this purpose over umbrella-wise. We just approved the two hundred thousand dollar funding for it.
That's correct.
This is an expenditure of that money that we've approved to fund.
So part of two hundred thousand dollars is for this, correct?
Right, yeah. So Chief, after the testing is completed, how long will it take to do that, and then about how long after the testing you think we'll be able to break ground? Or I know we have to build a road first, that'll be the first step, but how long do you think it will be before we're really in the works?
Well, the first step is the ninety days we have to test the property.
Right, okay.
So whether that falls the full ninety days, or whether we get it done in sixty days, you know, wherever it gets done in CEI, and our construction management team says this is the spot that's going to work, then I'm hoping we'll be breaking ground soon after that.
The goal is to try and get it finished by the end of the year. Of all three bond projects, this is probably the less complicated of all.
Well, that's correct.
That was the purpose of my question is, are we spending two hundred thousand dollars to build a road and so on to a piece of property that we don't know if we're sure that that's going to be the final location, or not?
I do not know if that road will, it has to be constructed first. No, we'd have to close on the property, and we'd know we could build it before we started a development plan. So we buy the property, and then there's a large-scale development that's got the planning commission, and all of that process would have to take place after we close on buying the property. And obviously, no streets would be built during that time. Mr. Wilmz?
If I'm correct, to state it this way, Chief, is that we've appropriated two hundred thousand dollars from reserves to do coverage of costs that was done on the first site, right?
That's correct.
And to cover this preliminary investigative costs on this site and some other expenses.
That's correct.
And so, all this is for is to do the investigative work on your new proposed site.
Oh, this one, oh, yes, that is correct.
Yeah.
Yes, and part of that is, part of the reason why it's a little bit more than it was on a Tudor site is because we are building the road, and they have to build a, they have to lay out that also. That's part of the work, extra work.
But this will not be building the road. This will be looking at the road construction and determining what's needed, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Did entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Fowler and Mr. Wilmz?
All right, councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wilmz?
Yes.
Carrie, five zero.
And the last resolution of the evening is amending the 2022 city budget to appropriate four hundred and thirty thousand in otherwise unappropriated and unrestricted financial reserves to various departments to fund certain employee salary increases to retain and attract a high-quality city workforce. So what this means is, you've probably heard the cost of living has gone up. I'm sure you've all experienced it, but that means that it puts pressure on wages as well. So you've probably seen that people are giving increases. Most of the cities in their 2022 budget, and we were the same, put in a three percent increase. Well, it's turning out that's not sufficient in order to retain. You need to retain your employees, let alone attract, because if people keep moving, it becomes very expensive to hire more people and train them. So if we have good people now, let's put things into place to try and keep them. We have excellent benefits. Having come out of the corporate world, I can tell you that our benefits are much, much better, especially on the health side. But at the end of the day, every two weeks, our employees are looking at, how much money have I got left over? And I call it breakfast table economics. My cereal's going up, my milk's going up, my sugar's going up. I need to be able to afford this, and if I can't get it in my current job, then I'm going to have to look elsewhere. Our sister cities, which are basically our competitors, are doing the same thing. You may have heard that the governor is about to release five thousand dollars to each police officer in the state. That's great, but all it does is just, it continues with the playing field, but just brings it up here, and you're still going to have that movement back and forth. So we need to ensure that our employees, and we have an excellent employee base, we need to ensure that they stay with us. So that's what this is all about. Counselors, our HR director is in the back, if you have some questions. Seeing none, did entertain a, Mr. Snow?
I might give you just an example. I was visiting with a young man that works for the sheriff's department, and he had been with the Joplin Police Department, and he came to the Benton County Sheriff's Department because it paid more, and he was leaving like the next week and going to the Bentonville Police Department because it was a better pay than the Benton County Sheriff's Department. So, in like a three-month period of time there, he had changed different departments three times.
And I'm old enough that I've seen this at least once before in my life, where they would leave for fifty cents an hour, and you just hired them, but they heard that somebody else was hiring, so they go over there and buy, and they're gone. So we need to try and make sure that our employees stick with us.
Yeah, and I do apologize if you already said this, but the initial thought was to put this into some type of an employee bonus or loyalty program, but it was decided on a special session that you would put it into the base salary.
Correct.
So not only it takes effect this year, but then, you know, it rolls forward, and you'll get an increase next year on the new base, instead of paying the bonus or the loyalty, and that's a one and done. They'll continue to benefit as, again, as the years move forward.
True, true.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Flynn?
Second.
Mr. Wilmz?
All right, roll call vote again. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wilmz?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Carrie, five zero.
Thank you. Meetings and announcements. The next city council work session will be Monday, April eighteenth, at five thirty here in the courtroom. The next regular meeting of city council will be Monday, April twenty-fifth, at six thirty in the court. The planning commission work session will be this week, on March the thirty-first, at four thirty here in the court. The planning commission regular meeting will be April the eleventh, at four thirty here in the court, and the Board of Construction Appeals, if needed, will be held April the twelfth here in the courthouse. Thank you very much for joining us this evening, and we are adjourned.